Okay. This meeting is called to order. This is the May 28th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. And, uh, do I have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 14th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Anybody have any announcements this evening?
Mr. Chairman, other than, and you might be planning to do it anyways, but just to thank everyone who was involved with yesterday's Memorial Day observance. It was very well handled. Veterans groups, Parks and Rec, some of our public safety folk. I'm sure I'm forgetting someone, but it was a very well-done event as it, as it normally is on a beautiful day.
Yep. Whoever added the weather did an unbelievable job. Perfect. Anything else? Okay. Mr. Mitzukat, do you have anything to report this evening?
Yes, a couple of things. Thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone, well, we've actually concluded our flushing schedule for the spring. We will continue to flush in and around areas where we're now doing ice pigging work, which is along Sewell Street and, um, in that area. We'll be progressing and performing about 10,000 linear feet of ice pigging over the course of the next three to five days. And we'll keep everyone up to speed on where we're at and where we'll be in the following day through our code red and website and various social media accounts. So we are having great success and getting a lot of sediment out of the lines. And we're hitting this very area that we've had a lot of trouble with over the last, um, period of time since we started flushing with the ice pigging approach. So hopefully that'll take care of that situation. The street sweeping operations also will continue for the rest of this week, and we'll be finishing areas south of Route 9. And that will conclude our spring street sweeping operations so far. We've gathered over 430 tons of material, and we'll be wrapping up the end of this week. And finally, I just wanted to take a moment and acknowledge the work of our first responders, school personnel, and other members of the municipal team. And I'm not going to go into detail, having the utmost respect for the people who are impacted personally, but I do want to recognize the hard work of so many employees in dealing with difficult incidents of last week. And despite the fact that it was a holiday weekend, this group did not let anyone down. There was never a sigh or complaint. Rather, it was what can we do to help? We did a good job, and I appreciate everyone's work. Thank you.
Quick question. On the flushing, so when we finish up for this spring, when can we expect to see flushing take place again? Is it going to be annually or as needed?
We won't do it through the summer months. If we have the opportunity and the need, we will do some in the, in the fall, depending on the rain conditions, amount of precipitation that's fallen throughout this course of the summer. And then we will resume, we'll try to make it, not try to make it. We will have annual flushing every spring, though.
Thank you.
Hopefully, though, the need for it, after we get through one of these big cycles that we're through, and no manganese coming out of the plant, it should, the need for it should start to diminish, although we'll probably still have to do a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay. It looks like at 7:05. We have a public hearing with New England Authentic Eats LLC, DBA Papagino's, 20 to 50 Boston Turnpike for a common fixtures license. Is there anybody here from Papagino's this evening? Would you like to come forward? Come to the table. Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourself?
My name's Michael Kugler. I'm the area manager for the Papagino's in Shrewsbury.
Okay. So is this, um, a new owner?
Correct. We got bought out by a new company, so we're just switching over our licenses from our old company to our new company.
Okay. Anything else changing?
Nothing else to change.
And there's no local license now, right?
Correct.
No here and away? Okay. Any plans for that in the future?
There might be, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
So predominantly same management and staff at the location?
Same, same management, same staff, just new owner of corporate, that's all.
Everything seems in order. The department head memos seem in order?
No, it looks like it's clear.
Awesome.
Okay. Have anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to be heard on this matter? Okay. There being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, close the hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. And what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the license application of New England Authentic Eats LLC, DBA Papagino's, 20 to 50 Boston Turnpike for its common vigilance license.
Second.
Okay. Motion's second. Any further discussion? There being none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. You're all set?
Awesome. Thank you very much.
See you tomorrow in the morning and get your license.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. Okay. Next order of business is to review an act to approve the installation of the Three Green Community designation signs in the vicinity of 267 Memorial Drive, 303 Boylston Street, and 180 Main Street. Any discussion on that? This is just, the check really wasn't, like, free, right?
Right.
We had to put the signs up. But, um, it's good to let people know that we're trying to conserve. Anybody have any comments on that?
Question. I have just a quick question. How did, how were the locations chosen for where to put the signs?
Just kind of at the major gateways within the community. Nothing more exciting than that. Yep.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to approve the installation of Three Green Community signs. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay. Item seven is to review the fiscal, uh, fiscal year 2019 goals of the town manager and a discussion of the evaluation process. Mr. Mitzukat, would you like to just highlight?
Sure.
What the goals were and how you were able to accomplish that?
Sure. So for the fiscal year 2019, which will end in about a month from now, there were several priorities that were set. First, in the area of financial management, we were charged with assembling a cross-departmental team to assess near-term revenue opportunities and trends and provide a report to the Board of Selectmen by November 30th. This kind of morphed into what ultimately became the, the first revenue manual that was created that we used to kick off the budget process and set resource levels as we made our way into the fiscal year 2020 budget process. I think we received good feedback on that document based on its narratives and charts and graph that explained some historic aspects, as well as the projections moving forward and some of our, um, different aspects of our revenue stream that may change depending on economic conditions. We also established a priority to improve the business and financial management within the operation of the utilities, which included implementing a stormwater enterprise fund for the start of fiscal year 20, which was supported by town meeting last week, to move to monthly billing for the water department by July 1st. Although we have pulled back on that actual approach, we are, I think, meeting the spirit of the goal, which was to make sure we had better data on a monthly basis. We decided not to actually bill residents on a monthly basis because that would have required another procedure as it relates to setting the rate and changing the steps within our rate schedule, more than we had anticipated at the outset of changing the rate last year. But we're able to fulfill our goal by being able to read meter data on a monthly basis, which has actually proved very insightful. We've, we've done it for two consecutive months, actually three now into May, and it is, does provide us a better picture of water usage throughout the community. So we'll continue to monitor that into fiscal year 20 and determine if we need to actually begin billing on a monthly basis, if, if that's the direction the board wants us to move in. We also were able to achieve the establishment of an enterprise fund for the water department, which was supported by town meeting last week. Moving from financial management into information technology, we're, we look to conduct a review of the enterprise and departmental-wide systems to be able to better plan for upgrades and replacement of various software and hardware systems throughout the, the town. We did produce an analysis with the IT team documenting 47 software application and seven system platforms. And we have been using that information and parlayed those meetings into monthly standing meetings with the town manager's office and the IT team. That will actually, it informed the process of setting the budget this year with the establishment of an upgrade for the vision system for the assessor. And we also determined another weak spot that we need to address in fiscal year 20, which is establishing an adoption and approval process for software systems varying, which will vary depending on the, the scope of the system, whether it's a departmental-wide, a department-wide or a town-wide system.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Currently, does the IT department source the, the software? Or how does, how does it, does a department identify the need or, not just the need, but the brand of software that we use? Does the department do that? The department heads are going to be using it, or does IT do it, do the research because they say, department heads say, "We want to address X." Does IT go out and say, "Okay, um, we know what you want to do, now we'll go out and find the software"?
If it's a new, if it's a new piece of software system, it's been a, a team-based approach from, from the beginning of those recent processes like Viewpoint. So the department as the subject matter experts and IT kind of as the gatekeepers to see if it will work and function and be safe within our network environment. That is the approach that we do like to take because we can make sure that the end-user is vetting out all the details and nuances of the system and IT is, ensures that we'll have the resources to be able to service it and make, make it function. But the departments are the true owners of their pieces of software, except for as it expands into different modules or different aspects of town operations. And then most recently, we've been discussing full leadership teams, like the administration and finance leadership team being the owners as it comes to upgrades and things when we're talking about the viewpoint system, since it does touch so many departments within that functional area. So whenever we have a legacy system or an existing system in place, like the assessor system and vision, as long as we're not having any major system-wide issues, we do look to continue with kind of the existing business operations that we have and just provide regular upgrades, upgrades to both improve performance and ensure security across that particular piece of software.
What is Viewpoint used for?
So Viewpoint is our permitting system. So it was primarily brought onboard for building permits, and we're expanding it into other areas, including like the road opening permits for DPW. We will move into licensing for the Board of Selectmen, dog licensing, things like that. So it, what started as a, a single departmental system is rapidly expanding into other areas and kind of be like our front door for licensing and any permits for town residents. That, that creates a kind of a single sign-on, so if you're coming in for a license permit or any other business-type application, if you have a login, user ID, because you may have applied for a building permit or something, then you can just use that sign-on. We already have all your information, so it makes it more convenient.
I used the, I used that software, and it wasn't a complicated permit application because it was just a small renovation, but I found it a lot easier to use than when I played with it a couple of years ago. And the feedback, the electronic feedback that, that the permit was received, that it was ready, that the payment was received, I thought was, it was very helpful.
Moving out of financial management into human resource management, over the course of the year, we were able to accomplish the reorganization of various departments into the Department of Public Works by the midpoint of the fiscal year, January 1st. But obviously, we have a lot of change management and growth that will continue to occur over time as this new department forms itself and functions more efficiently day after day. One of the things that are on the list that we were not able to complete within the timeframe, which is by the end of this fiscal year, is the identification and implementation of core personnel policies by the end of the fiscal year. So we were certainly able to hire a new human resources coordinator, but with the number of turnover and replacement of key positions and the efforts that that's taken, whether it's water and sewer, deputy fire chief, the various division managers, DPW director, et cetera, we just have not been able to finalize the list of core policies that we do want to put in place and then be able to implement those policies. But we'll use a very open approach with town staff as we develop those policies, and we'll reestablish that goal for fiscal year 2020. In the area of economic development, we are tasked with establishing a feedback process and documenting developer and contractor trade suggestions to improve the town's regulatory and permitting processes. So the assistant town manager has had the lead on this and working with the planning staff has crafted a developer survey, but has not been vetted yet at this point. And the planning staff has also been reaching out developers, I think, more proactively during construction and after construction process, projects to gain feedback. We've learned a lot from our major Lakewood Commons development and just some other management approaches that we'll take as developers are now looking to build on lots that are just more complicated than they have in the past with slopes and steep grades and retaining walls, et cetera. So we'll continue to improve in that area. One of the other priorities was to assemble current plans and documents for the Route 20 corridor and to formulate it into a marketing plan. We, we certainly have been able to coordinate those plans in-house. They are not in the form of a marketing tool, but we're getting closer and closer to being able to do that. We are benefiting from going through the Route 20 corridor master planning project with DOT, which will be completed this summer, and some other focus on the Route 20 and Grafton Street, Route 20, Lake Street intersections as it relates to improvements that are being proposed for safety at the Grafton Street intersection and the Edgemere Drive-in redevelopment with the Lake Street intersection. So this will certainly take some additional efforts, but as we continue to focus on engagement and outreach to various aspects of the community, this is at the top of the list as this corridor will open up for development with the construction of sewer that will get underway this summer. Continue, another priority area was the continued advocacy for focus on improving development opportunities in, in the town center. This is certainly, a lot has been accomplished in this area with the support of the Town Center Business Association. Several grants were received to do a parking analysis within the center and a follow-on wayfinding development, wayfinding signage development grant, which is currently underway, and the mass development grant to develop an RFQ for the, well, first to study the former Beal property and then an RFQ for the proposal for the disposition of the Beal School, which is currently under consideration for a mass development grant. So I think a lot has been accomplished that will set the framework for some business improvement and community development within the town center in the years to come. That's something that will be an ongoing priority for us. We accomplished a lot in the areas of green communities. We submitted our application in October. After the adoption of a fuel efficiency vehicle policy in August, energy reduction plan was completed in September, and then the town received designation ultimately in December of 2018. We were awarded a grand of $183,000 to tackle projects which are currently in the bidding process or underway to, to meet the energy reduction goals of the town. And we have developed a capital improvement plan, which was recently approved by town meeting with priority given to the police department and municipal campus so that we can start to address the needs of the aging police station and recognize those changes that have occurred since that building was constructed in the early 70s. So we're happy with the support of that through the general capital plan at town meeting last week. And we continue to work on the public radio system project with the police department, fire department, and other aspects of emergency management. We received $50,000 in state funding through the FY19 budget process. We have met internally, established a scope of work that will be used to, for a developer to come onboard and make recommendations as it relates to the upgrade or replacement of our existing public safety radio system. I think those are some of the, the highlights of the various goals that were established. Certainly didn't achieve all of them, but we got a lot accomplished over the course of the last 12 months.
Good. Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I had a couple.
Yes.
So I just, overall, I think there's a lot of wins in here. Things that got done, got done well within the time that we had put on it. But I also want to point out that I think it's really important that when a goal isn't working, that you're not able to achieve the goal, that you're willing to just say, "Hold on, and let's go back and figure out what needs to be done in order to make the goal achievable, but also what makes sense for the larger organization." So you're not just pushing through for the sake of meeting the goal, but doing something that's going to make the organization stronger. So I definitely appreciate that. I think as we move towards setting goals for 2020, what I'd like to see included is something about communication and, and engaging the, the community more in communication, some sort of plan and how the, the board would, would engage, but also just how we engage as a town with residents. I know the Facebook page is a great start, but people just seem to be getting their information in so many different ways, whether it's social media or print media, video. And I think there's lots of opportunities where we can make it more accessible to people. And I mean, there's always an opportunity to improve. I certainly heard that quite a bit, just at town meeting, where people might not have realized that something was happening, even though internally we all are so close to it that we know things are happening with different aspects of the community. But those are our town meeting members, and they're supposed to be dialed in for the most part. So if they're missing it, then that says to me that we have an opportunity to do a better job of just sort of getting more information out to people in different ways. So that was something I'd like to put into the next plan or goal. And then the other thing I was thinking too was just, I like the way we have the capital improvement plan, like we're looking out five years. And then Mr. Holland also like presented to us the DPW's road plans, like I can look at a document and know within the next five years what roads are going to get paved. And I think the more we can do things like that and sort of plan for the expenses and the projects that we know are coming down the road, that that's a really helpful tool in keeping us focused.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I mean, simply, I'd like to say that we, we reviewed an act on these goals on June 25th of last year with no expectation or knowledge of what was going to happen since then. A lot has happened since then. I'm more pleased to see that there's been progress and some goals have been hit. Um, I'm more, um, pleased to see that there's been progress and some goals have been hit. I'm not that concerned that some goals haven't been hit because I see there's been efforts made in that direction. So, I mean, overall, um, you know, highly approving of, of what was done in the last year relative to the goals. As far as, uh, establishing future goals, I'd, I'd like a little more time to think about that.
Okay. Um, I would agree. I think we, we got a lot done. I think you got a lot done, um, you know, a little culture change that you had to go through, um, a lot of, um, a lot of personnel changes, um, and replacing those people, um, turned out to be a little bit difficult in this, um, economy. So, um, I think it's unrealistic to think that, for anybody to think that you could get all the goals done a hundred percent, um, to where the board expected or, or, or you may have expected, but I think it's important to work towards them and, um, and if it needs more time than to carry it over into the next year. And, um, I think as, um, Mrs. Caseman said, if it needs to be reassessed, reassessed it, um, you make the changes and you, and you keep moving. I do agree, um, with you on the communication issue. Um, I planned to mention it during the town meeting recap, but, um, I, I think there is work to be done there. I think we've done actually, um, maybe not enough, but I think we've done a lot in the past, the past two years. And I, I do think that the Facebook page, um, uh, will be a big help because fortunately or unfortunately, a lot of people seem to be getting that as their first source of news. But, um, uh, we're in a different age than we were 15 or 20 years ago in terms of the submitting information and I think we're just going to have to adapt to that. So, um, does anybody, um, have any thoughts about, um, how the town manager evaluation process, um, may or may not change based on, um, you know, using a, um, a scenario where the goal setting is, is, is what the evaluation, not the goal setting, but accomplishment of goals and long-term planning? Um, I don't know where to go with it yet. We, we talk about this every year around, um, around, um, evaluation time. Um, and we always say we're going to look at it, um, and we don't seem to get very far. But in my way of thinking, um, having the manager and the board, because I think it's a joint effort, set goals for the next year, um, so that the manager knows what the expectations are and then developing a format or a process to do an evaluation based on, um, whether the goals were appropriate goals to set, um, wh- how they were or weren't accomplished and, and stuff related to that probably makes more sense than what we have right now. Um, one of the questions or one of the categories is, um, stays educated or something like that, which is important, but I think meeting a goal on a, um, changing the financial model of the town, um, is a lot more important than having the manager go out to a, a seminar or a short, a short course that, um, um, may be great for professional development, but not necessarily germane to what we're trying to do at the time. So, um, just a thought. I think probably be more appropriate to have a full board, um, when we discuss that. And perhaps maybe we should be thinking about, um, a workshop offsite. Um, we seem to get more done in those, um, when we're locked in a room. So, um, why don't we think about that, carry it forward to the next meeting? I think we'll have a full board at the next meeting and perhaps we can talk about it then. Is that okay?
Okay. Would you envision that we will still distribute the current evaluation tool sooner like tomorrow and, um, review an act on the town manager evaluation on June 11th? Or would you like us to hold, um, add back to the agenda the town manager evaluation process for the 11th and then perhaps act on the evaluation on June 25th?
Act on the evaluation, when?
June 25th.
And always pleasure the board. What do you think?
Are you thinking of redoing this whole tool before we?
Well.
I, I think that might be ambitious.
I don't think, I don't think that's going to be possible. Um, you know, it, other members' thoughts are, but I, I think we're kind of stuck with the.
Yeah.
With what we have right now, but I, I do think, um, in July might be a good time to really focus on that and try to work out a, a, a better method. So.
Okay.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the reason we never do it is because we've got the bigger and better things to do and there's, the need has, I mean, we talk about it, but we don't. I mean, this board is very good about doing things. We do things when, so I think there's, something that holds us back is that we're questioning the, the cost benefit of doing the work, I mean, truthfully. Um, so, I mean, I don't have a problem. I know other board members, perhaps more than I have, have, uh, found the, uh, evaluation tool, the lacking. To me, it's, it's just one, one means of organization that five people can use together to, to get to some type of conclusion. So I, I'm not, I'm not adverse to it, um, but I'm not the biggest champion of changing the process. I mean, I think it's adequate. Maybe it's not fabulous. Maybe we wouldn't win any, you know, contests, but I, I think it does the job.
Well, maybe it's just a matter of tweaking some of the questions or changing a question here or there to make it more germane to what's happening right now. Doesn't have to be a whole new process, but I think it's got to be more in line with what we're trying to do.
I mean, I kind of look at this as my child's report card, right? I mean, sometimes I, I look at it and I think, okay, it's, it's one piece of a larger picture and I always go straight for the comments. Like that's what I wanted. I want to know what someone has to say outside of these set criteria. And I think that this is helpful in guiding your thinking and making sure that you kind of hit all the boxes in thinking about the different, um, tasks or, or kind of things that, that the manager needs to be focusing on. But at the end, for me, it's what I write, um, that narrative that really brings it together and I think is a better reflection of, of an evaluation. And, and because that's part of it, I feel like it rounds it out a bit. I don't know that, and I, I agree with what Mr. LeBeau is saying. It's just that we get through to this point and we realize that we have all these other priorities and fix, or improving this just seems to, um, fall to the bottom. So I guess it's a matter of whether or not we think it's adequate to get us to the goal.
Well, I think maybe one of the things, um, that we need to think about and, and I don't think it's been a problem, but, um, then, then we need to be sure that we're giving the manager adequate feedback throughout the year. Um, and I think we do that and, and in, and not in a very formal way, and I'm not saying we should formalize it, um, but, um, I think if you only gave feedback, um, some, I, I guess that is the only formal setting, um, through that document, I, I, I find it lacking and I, I, I was the one who put that together, um, after some research with, um, Mrs. Hogan, um, at the time, um, and I don't think it was ever meant to, to be the end-all. But having said that, I, perhaps a discussion with the full board and maybe we'll keep this the way it is, but maybe we'll come up with other ideas of, of how to make sure that there's adequate feedback, um, coming and going during the year. Um, I, I know personally, personally at work, um, I, I like getting feedback throughout the year, um, as opposed to waiting and say, "Well, why didn't you tell me this?" Um, and I'm not saying that's what we do, but, um, perhaps is, is it just a different way to do it. So, and accomplish the same thing. Okay, so.
I don't think we answered his question.
I, I, no, I was just going to go back, 25th, um, 25th of June, and we'll talk in July about if, with the full board, if we want to do anything differently. Right? That's what you asked for, right?
We, we originally through my email to the board had the actual, we would mail, we would email out the evaluation tool tomorrow and then the board would, um, provide its review at the next meeting. I just wanted to know if you want to continue on that schedule or if you want to think about it and I can catch up with you after.
Stay on that.
Okay.
Okay, to stay on that schedule? No, just stay on schedule.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Uh, next item, uh, review an act on the draft calendar, uh, through December 2019. Um, I don't know if anybody has any conflicts that they, um, be able to point out at this point, but, um, I don't think Christmas Eve is going to be a night we're going to have a meeting. Um, so I think we should take that right off the schedule.
Probably.
And, um, perhaps if we need a meeting either the week before or sometime the week after, we run into the same situation on, on, on New Year's Eve, but we can, we can adapt. We, we juggle them around during that time period. Is that okay?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I, I don't think we should meet on December 24th. Um, so we're meeting on December 10th. If we adopt the schedule, we'd likely be meeting on January 14th. And I just took a quick look at the calendar, not so much to look at my dates, just to kind of look. I mean, December, I think in both weeks, the Monday and the Thursday, which would be the 23rd and the 26th, or the 30th and the 2nd, could be dates. I'm not suggesting we establish a date now. I'm just saying that as we get close, as we get into December, if there's a need to hold a meeting, we've got some possible dates.
Great. Do you need questions out? Is December 10th too early for you to have all the licensing stuff ready that we have to have in place for?
No, uh, licenses are usually due by November 15th, so December 10th is fine.
Okay. All right. All right, so 24th we'll scrub and we'll.
Motion to adopt the schedule as proposed, eliminating December 24th?
Sure.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? I mean, none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, so we'll add one if we need one. Item 11 is to review an act on a six-month extension request from Pharmacan relative to section 9C of the executed host community agreement. Um, Mr. Miskow, do you want to run through that or I can, I can, uh, just paraphrase the letter?
I can, I can go through it real quick.
Okay.
Um, so the original host, well, the host community agreement with Pharmacan, which is the, uh, uh, medical marijuana dispensary and, uh, marijuana, adult-use marijuana retailer that's proposed for 939, uh, Boston Turnpike on Route 9, um, had some timelines and deadlines within that host community agreement, which are set to, um, come to fruition on June 11th. And, uh, they have done a lot of due diligence, including going before the zoning board of appeals to receive a variance that was required. Uh, they consider some extensive changes to the, to the physical structure of the building, which they have since, um, modified and are no longer going to undertake and, um, will be before the planning board at their July meeting for their special permit, uh, which will be outside of building permits, their final local approval to be able to operate. So I think that their request for a six-month extension, um, is appropriate and I would recommend authorization, um, for the town manager to make this change.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to recuse myself from this discussion, so I just want to inform you of that. I wasn't going to walk out of the room unless it becomes a lengthy conversation for purposes of motions and seconds.
Um, okay. That leads to an interesting question.
You still have.
Do we still have a call?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, didn't have that happen down to two before. Okay, um, so.
So, um, it seems that there, um, it's both of those sensitive dates. The opening also within eight months of the date on the.
That's correct.
On the host community agreement also would be in jeopardy, but the six months should give them enough time.
Right.
I think, given the history and the amount of work that's gone into, um, moving along with Pharmacan, I, I would see no reason not to grant the extension and keep everything else the same in the host community agreement.
I think we knew this was aggressive and it's just a good check-in that if we had other thoughts of their progress, that we'd have an opportunity to make a different decision.
Right. If they weren't making progress, we might come up with something different.
I just think it takes a lot longer than anybody anticipated it would.
Right. Um, okay, so, um, how do, how do we do this? Do we, do you need a vote?
Yes, I would, I would appreciate if the board authorized me to, um.
Okay.
Extend the host community agreement.
Okay, then, um, I move that the board authorize, am I authorizing the manager?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I'm authorizing the manager, um, to, um, sign a six-month extension request from Pharmacan relative to section 9C of the executed host community agreement.
Second. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? So voted.
Abstain.
One abstain. Okay, uh, I believe that covers our, our business.
Need to, Mr. Chairman, we actually need to take up items nine.
Oh, yeah.
And 10.
Should I do, skip it?
Skip.
Oh, okay. Must have been in a hurry. Um, okay, so item nine is to review and authorize chairman to sign, uh, the permanent utility easement agreement for Baker Ave., um, Baker Avenue Permanent Water and Sewer Easement for Lakeway Commons LLC. This is related to the sale of the property, um, of the, um, of the apartment complex. And we had previously voted this, but one of the documents didn't get recorded, is that correct?
The easement instrument itself was never recorded. Town meeting action and board action has got us to this point, but the instrument itself needs to be recorded. So the, this would be signing of the instrument.
Okay, so nothing changed, we're just finishing the.
Nothing changed.
Finishing the process. Okay. Pleasure the board.
Move we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second. Any further discussion? If being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Posed, so voted. Uh, town meeting recap, we got off into the other thing and we forgot. Uh, Mr. Miskow, do you want to highlight, um, any of the warrant articles or?
Yeah, if I, if I could. Um, I just want to take an opportunity to thank department heads and the board and the entire team for what I believe was a successful meeting. Um, I appreciate to, um, be able to touch on a few of those key initiatives, I think that have been sent in motion from the town meeting last week. Uh, first and foremost, uh, changes to the personnel board for, that occurred through Article 3 puts us in a great position to be more nimble in the management of human resources. Um, that obviously provides classification and compensation, final approval to the personnel board, which was previous with town meeting and will enable us to take an iterative approach to improving the structure of the organization and the role of individual positions that best serve the needs of the community. We'll certainly have the opportunity to be more competitive in recruiting and retaining staff. Um, I'm certainly more excited about being able to be more nimble with today's, but, with today's job market, um, and the number of critical and long-tenured retirements. Uh, we're certainly going to need every opportunity and every tool that we have to be able to be competitive in the marketplace, so, um, town meeting also supported the board's goal to, uh, that we touched on earlier, to, uh, change the financial management approach for our utilities. Uh, there was establishment of three new enterprise funds with regards to water and stormwater. This is going to provide us with the most effective means of managing these, these utility. I was also pleased to get town meeting's acceptance of separate storm, or separate sewer article and the change in the approach that we use in, uh, the utility capital investments through consolidated articles versus standalone articles. Um, hopefully, the lack of questions meant that folks did agree that this is a cleaner way to approach those particular areas rather than going on a project-by-project basis. I guess sticking with the capital plan, we were pleased that one of the largest capital improvement plans, uh, for the departments was passed. Um, this plan invests in the equipment and infrastructure that we have to keep things running. While it was a significant investment, it really was to just keep, um, While it was a significant investment, it really was to just keep, replace, you know, either existing assets or other infrastructure. Just a reminder, we have, you know, over $216 million in capital assets, so it's going to take a measured approach on a year-by-year basis to continue to do this. And I think one of the highlights in the plan, certainly not the top dollar item, but will be that project that we start looking at, the police station, and meeting the needs for that department's operations well into the future. And similarly, town meeting supported the citizens petition for hexavalent chromium, which shows cleared advocacy for a continued aggressive approach to improve drinking water, even if we meet current regulatory standard. And I know that's a board that this approach has always taken, and we certainly will continue to do that along with the town meeting vote. And I guess my final note would be the continued measured approach with zoning bylaws. I believe that it continues to preserve the reasonableness request in development of various parcels throughout the community. So all in all, I think it was a very good and successful town meeting that occurred over those two nights.
I would agree. Thank you. I think the, setting up the enterprise funds is going to help with transparency and at least people being on the stand better what these operations cost. So, we do have a question regarding that, though. How quickly can these enterprise funds be set up? Is it an idiosyncratic task to set it up? I mean, are we ready to, will we be ready to go on July 1st?
We will be ready to go on July 1st. We started working on account management, so there's actually physically changing of account numbers to reflect them being separate and standalone accounts, not within the general fund. And then one of the most important tasks is on the revenue side in our financial management system, redirecting and repointing those revenues when they are received in to make sure they hit the right accounts. So, but we're well on our way. I've actually already received a report with all the account numbers for the capital projects, and the town accountant, Mary Thompson, has the lead role in making all those other account management things come to fruition, and I'm confident that we'll be ready for July 1st.
Great. Any other comments?
I was just very glad to see the zoning articles pass as easily as they did. I know that we've been trying for years to close the loopholes, and then developers find ways around the zoning bylaws that we propose, and with less and less large tracts of land available for building, it's just really important that, you know, these zoning changes take place so that when homes do get built, the lots make sense for the neighborhood that they're in and for the people that are, you know, directly affected by those homes going up around them. So, I was glad about that.
The trouble is that developers keep figuring out a way around it. It's amazing. Very creative people. But just to touch on again, not to bully the point, I think communication issue did come up. I think even though a lot of people didn't talk about it, my sense of looking out at town meetings is that a lot of people agreed that we need to try to find a way to communicate a little bit better. And one thing I did see related to that, and I know you heard it, because I kept whispering it in the rear during the night, is that we got to get the footprints back into the budget book. People became accustomed to that. It's amazing, I think, and I'm not saying they're minor, because they're not, because they did explain things, questions that had come up over the years, but to see when they were gone, how much people missed them, so we have the information, so it shouldn't be hard to do that. Okay. Anything else? Okay. All right. Now am I down to correspondence? Okay, let's stay, we'll go right down to number 12, keeping order the rest of the way. It's a letter dated May 14th, Paul Schwab, 38 Browning Road, regarding Article 25. This was the historic preservation bylaw. Mr. Schwab and his committee group have decided, had decided to ask that this be defeated so that they could work on it further and come back at a later date. Item 13 is an email dated May 14th from Jessica Bellevue, Office of State Representative Hannah Kane, regarding the Office Economic Development Planning Council Regional Engagement Sessions. There is one on May 30th from 11 to 1 o'clock at Clock University, if anybody would like to go. Noted. Item 14 is an email dated May 15th from Hi Ginsburg, 8 Valley Forge Drive, regarding the Colonial Drive intersection. So noted. We did convey back to Mr. Ginsburg and other people who had been sending in emails that we were waiting for the Mass Start Report, which we thought would be coming out shortly, so I think within the next two weeks we'll have something, and we'll have to decide how to proceed from there. Item 15 is an email dated May 16th from Brian Moss, 16 Ruthencircle, regarding a substitute motion on Article 20, which was the pesticide reduction bylaw, asking us to vote, to take a vote on the substituted motion. Obviously, we're a little past that. Item 16 is an email dated May 17th from Ben Tatablier, 19 Kenneworth Road, regarding the presentation for town meeting. And also, we had a question on it about the petition article that he sponsored regarding term limits, and that was not taken up because the form of the way the article was written was not, I would say it was illegal, but it wasn't written in the proper format to be accepted, and it couldn't be changed like a motion. Item 18 is a letter dated May 21st from the residents of Patriot Lane, regarding the nuisance dogs at 47 Memorial Drive. We have another letter, we've had a report from the animal control officer. I think after the law had changed on how to deal with nuisance and dangerous dogs, that we're severely limited on the remedies that we have to address this. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to talk with the manager and see if there's a way to, number one, find out what the path forward is on this, if there is actually noncompliance. And the other thing is to see if there's a way to try to find a way to address this issue, and perhaps monitor it a little bit more closely to try to get a handle on what's going on down there, because animal control officers' report, and it could be the time of days that he was there, but not, they're not seeming to hear or not hear the same things. And there's something happening there. I'm sure the dogs are barking at some point, but we have to figure out a way to resolve this. So if it's okay, would you work with the manager on that?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Just from reading the letters and the animal control officer's report, just a question, the police are aware of the nuisance dog ruling made by this board, correct? Because that would seem to be a question in here, but they are...
They are aware.
Aware. And then it seems that there's no verification of enrollment in obedience class for the barking dogs. The last ask was on May 9th, and I just didn't know if we had received any confirmation that there was, in fact, obedience training taking place.
It's my understanding that it is, yes. I don't know whether that was in an email, apparently it was not, it was not on Mr. Elm's report, but I think we've received subsequent communications. I'm rather confident we've received subsequent communications that they are enrolled. Now, I think we're waiting for details on the specifics of the class, though, so we will be sure to follow up on that and provide the board with options before the next meeting.
No, I think it's really important that, you know, you talk with the manager about what our next steps can be for this.
Yep. And then the last item is an email dated May 23rd from Corinne Pierce, 35 Yorkshire, Terrace Number 12, regarding public and animal safety regarding the geese on Florastreet. I don't know what we can do on that, I know those geese have been down there, or some generation of those geese have been down there for 15 to 20 years crossing that road. So it's been an issue for a long time. Perhaps we could actually follow up on that and see if there's anything that can be done. I'm not sure that a geese crossing crosswalk would work, and I'm not sure that, let's see, about signage would be one thing, but this boy's been very conservative on its use of informational signs, and so I think we have to think about what the precedent would be to stop doing something like that. And it goes back to our, we actually have a policy on, not on animal crossing, but on...
Advisory signs.
Advisory signs. So, why don't the manager and I have a, we'll have an animal summit, and see if we can talk about that and report back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I know you're too modest to mention, but I have personally witnessed you assisting some of those young geese crossing Florastri, crossing South Street.
And a turtle. In any event, all right.
I tried to help, well, I helped, that dog wasn't appreciative of my help.
But I still have another year and a half to go that I'm safe, that I could try to help another dog, and if I had the same experience, I would be safe from contracting rabies, so I'm good for a little while. I don't know, do geese have rabies?
You get bit by a goose?
A goose. In any event, is there anything else to come before the board in the open session? Okay. There being none, motion to a drive?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed? So voted. This meeting is adjourned.